Well, thanks for being here. About this, it sounds like a warm-up for the Olympics. Particularly, we share in Riverside County something very strong with Australia, and that's hot weather and swimming pools. And we have a lot of great swimmers, as you do. We used to have a great exchange of Australian and American swimmers. So, we look forward to seeing them perform here in a few short months in London. This is to recognize and honor His Excellency, the Council General of Australia, Christopher Paul de Cure. Whereas Council General Christopher Paul de Cure has served with great honor and distinction as the Council General of Australia in the state of California since March 2009, whereas the government of Australia and the county of Riverside have forged a productive partnership in the promotion of trade under the leadership of Council General Christopher Paul de Cure. Trade between Australia and the county of Riverside has increased as a result of partnership. Whereas Council General Christopher Paul de Cure has served within diplomatic service of Australia for over three decades, holding offices of great responsibility, including his service as First Secretary and with the Embassy of Australia in Washington, D.C. And whereas Council General Christopher Paul de Cure has also served his nation in the Australian Parliament as an Assistant Secretary and played a significant role in the success of the Australia 2000 Olympic Games. I didn't know that before I was down there. So, what support were you?
I wasn't a competitor. I was actually looking after international dignities and making sure that all of us will enjoy their time in Superbad, but also maybe management, particularly Crosses management.
I've never talked to anyone who's come back from Australia unhappy. They're all really happy. How do you do that?
Well, I'm always happy when I come back to a life, too.
Whereas Council General Christopher Paul de Cure has served his country during terror attacks and during the valley bombing of 2002. For his outstanding ability, leadership, and service, he was awarded the prestigious Order of Australia Medal. Now, therefore, be it resolved to determine the order on this 26th day of June 2012, that the Riverside County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize and honor Council General Christopher Paul de Cure on his distinguished career in diplomatic service. Be it further ordered that the Board of Supervisors do hereby extend sincere compliments and thanks to Council General de Cure's efforts at expanding trade and tourism to the mutual benefit of our county and Australia, and wish him well in his new assignment. Thanks for coming today. Any words of wisdom for us here in the county, as we do try to leverage every potential opportunity to increase our trade?
Keep Tom Freiman on the books, I think. I mean, obviously, I think one of the challenges you have in Riverside County is that it's part of this very large Southern California area. And I think certainly when I arrived here, I wasn't as aware of Riverside's county's contribution, particularly to drug investment in this Asian Pacific region. It's such a rapidly growing area that I think there's huge potential there. And I guess every time I drive through the county, I see all the traffic that goes back and forwards, trucks up and down from the port heading east of here. So, I think there's a great opportunity there, where you have moved goods and services and people, inevitably trade and investment and so forth. So, I think keep pushing the bar and reminding people that there's more to Southern California than Los Angeles and San Diego, I guess.
Good, good. We really appreciate your international perspective on this, too. That's very helpful for us, very encouraging for us, too. So, any other more comments? Or, our CEO, Mr. Orr.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. de Cure, we would also like to present to you the Distinguished Diplomat Award, with sincere gratitude for your leadership in the area of establishing diplomatic relationships between your great nation and the county of Riverside, state of California, United States of America. Trade with your nation creates jobs for the residents of your nation and our country, and this joint effort helped establish the county of Riverside as the United States of America's 23rd ranked exporting region in the entire nation. It is through mutually beneficial partnerships and from diplomatic ties that the workforces of both parties benefit from and with free flow of trade and reciprocal access to each entity's markets. The County of Riverside Board of Supervisors, our Economic Development Agency, and our Office of Foreign Trade greatly acknowledge your statementship, leadership, and above all, sincere friendship. And with this award, we grant your honorary citizenship in the county of Riverside, state
And we have one other presentation this morning. Goodwill. Goodwill Representatives. Good morning, thanks for coming. Appreciate you being down here. This is a proclamation to honor Goodwill of Southern California, whereas the Goodwill has been and continues to be a major part of the safety net of the United States and the state of California, the county of Riverside, and the 28 incorporated cities comprising the county of Riverside. Whereas the Goodwill and its work in our county enriches our communities as it helps empower the individual, advance businesses, and provide care and compassion for everyone.
Whereas the Goodwill has been a formal partner with Riverside County Board of Supervisors, the Riverside County Workforce Investment Board, and the Riverside County Economic Development Agency team members that are assigned to our network of workforce development centers since 2009. And whereas the Goodwill most recently named the county of Riverside as the 2012 Champion of the Year, this award recognizes the leadership of the Workforce Investment Board and the hard work and dedication of the Economic Development Agency team members that are assigned to the Workforce Development Centers. And whereas... Whereas Goodwill serves our communities here and across the nation by helping those with disabilities or other vocational challenges. In addition, Goodwill provides support to businesses by providing education, training, work experience, and job placement services. And whereas the county of Riverside is proud to partner with the Goodwill of Southern California, which in 2011 serves 107,802 people in need, assisted another 7,140 businesses, and placed almost 10,000 people in jobs. Placed almost 10,000 people in jobs. That's important right now. Now, therefore, be it resolved, determine order, on this 26th day of June 2012, Riverside County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize and honor Goodwill of Southern California, its employees, volunteers, and clients for the outstanding work and goodwill they provide to the county of Riverside and its residents.
While you're receiving this, I wanted you to stay here because this is, we're honoring you as part of, a key part of the joint program with our own county's workforce board and the Economic Development Agency. So, Mr. Field, if you want to know, Emile Bada from Workforce Board of Work and our community action agencies. Goodwill acts as a real antenna out there in the community to a lot of folks that are in distress and a real sign of our economic situation out there at each Goodwill throughout the community. How many Goodwills are there in Riverside County?
Well, it depends on whether you mean the retail stores or the folks who help people get jobs. Here, it all comes. Here in Riverside County, we now have six placement service representatives helping to place people in jobs. And in the fall, we're going to add four more to continue to expand services. And I just have to take a moment to thank our partners, our valiant partners in Riverside County Economic Development Agency and the Workforce Investment Board, because we came here three years ago to help people get jobs, and without you, we would not have been able to transform as many lives through the power of work. So, thank you so much.
Second proclamation really describes this joint program, which looks like it's very, very, been very, very productive. This is to honor the Riverside County Economic Development Agency and Workforce Investment Board, whereas the county Board of Supervisors has established the Workforce Investment Board in accordance with federal law and placed the programs the board provides under the direction of the Riverside County Economic Development Agency in 1994. And whereas the Workforce Investment Board's, its predecessors of the Workforce Investment Board and Private Industry Council have performed their duties in an outstanding manner and worked diligently to assist our underemployed and employed workers and unemployed workers with job training and counseling. And whereas the Riverside County Workforce Investment Board and the staff of the Economic Development Agency's Workforce Investment Centers were recently honored for their exceptional work by the Goodwill of Southern California as a Champion of the Year. And whereas Supervisor Stone?
And whereas the staff of the Workforce Development Center collaborated with the Goodwill of Southern California to provide an efficient and cost-effective way to help job seekers find employment. And whereas the staff of the Workforce Development Centers were instrumental in establishing the partnership with Goodwill, which allowed placement staff at Goodwill to reach into the cities of Indio, Hemet, Riverside, and Burrieta. And whereas... Whereas since 2009, Goodwill of Southern California has partnered with Riverside County Economic Development Agency and the network of Workforce Development Centers. As this beneficial partnership enables Goodwill to limit costs through shared workspace, making more resources available for job seekers. Now, therefore, be it resolved, determine and order, on this 26th day of June 2012, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize and honor the Workforce Investment Board, Economic Development Agency, and their staff in the Workforce Development Centers. And be it further ordered that the Board of Supervisors do hereby extend sincere compliments to all parties involved in helping the county of Riverside receive the 2012 Champion of the Year award by the Goodwill of Southern California. It seemed like, almost like you should give that.
Would you like?
Yeah. Have a good sleep.
Thanks again, we so appreciate that.
Thank you. I have always said that Workforce Investment Boards are the best kept secrets in every local area, and I never miss an opportunity to promote what the WIBs do. So, if you can give me 90 seconds. Our nation's public workforce system is delivered through 550 local Workforce Investment Boards around the country and 50 state boards that are administered by their respective governors. These 550 boards run 2,900 Workforce Development Centers, just like ours, and the funding comes through Congress via the Department of Labor. Now, I have, at the present time, I am chair of your, our Workforce Investment Board, Riverside County Workforce Investment Board, but I also have the privilege of being chair of the California Workforce Investment Board in Sacramento, and I am past chair of the National Association of Workforce Boards in Washington, D.C. And I share that with you because you allow me to represent you in Sacramento and Washington, and I proudly do that. And every chance I get with the Executive Committee of the National Board to educate our legislators and our administrators in Washington, that even though the boards don't create jobs directly, their main purpose is threefold. They assist dislocated workers to help new jobs. They assist, they provide training. And then finally, they, we assist, we have special services for youth 16 to 24, which are our future workforce. And so, in that role, in educating Congress, we remind them that, yes, it is related to the economic recovery. It's a very good system. It's very successful to not cut funding. And we also remind them that we don't need a Republican solution. We don't need a Democratic solution. We need the right solution. Here in Riverside County alone, our four centers serve over 7,500 people every month. And last year, we served over 1,100 businesses. So, folks, the workforce system works. Now, Goodwill Industries, and I see them all over the country, they are a major player nationally, and they work with many, many WIBs around the country. And even Goodwill of Southern California, Javier, you guys work with many, many boards in California, and yet you chose us as your Champion of the Year. And simply, the reason is that Riverside County Workforce Investment Board is one of the best in the nation. And so, I'm proud of that. Now, in closing, let me just say that leadership starts at the very top. So, to all five of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for allowing us to do what we do. Thank you for providing the leadership. And to the administration, Jay, you and your team have always been there for us. And at the department level, Rob Field and Lisa Brandl. And then even at the division level, our director, Felicia Flornoy, and Mark Fishtonson, our executive, our Assistant Director. And finally, last but not least, our dedicated, tireless Board of Directors. They're all volunteer, and they do a really, really great job. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emile. That's a really good overview, and we need to play that over and over again because you have a key role, particularly now, in leading us out of this recession. So, appreciate you keeping the momentum up, and this partnership looks like it's been very productive and will increase its productivity. But thank you very much for being here this morning. Thank you. Good morning again, everyone. I think Tom Freeman, Rob Field have gone through what, probably around 35 countries now here before the board. But Riverside County keeps extending its reach, and I always love to hear all the anthems and see the, no, I think it's really helpful to see the people who are working internationally, too, to improve relations, and one of the best ways is through economic interchanges such as foreign trade. So, appreciate your continued emphasis on that. And our youth commissioners we had here this morning, hopefully, they'll, they've taken some opportunities away from their work, and we had Cub Scouts from River Valley earlier watching all this, too. So, we'd like to include the next generation beginning to think about these issues. All right, any other only comments from our board members? This morning, Supervisors Tavalloni and Benoit are off this week, so we have a bare majority of the board here, so we won't be able to take up any items required before Fifth's vote. Supervisors Ashley and Comments before Sir Supervisor?
W.R.Cog, that's Western Regional Council of Governments, for a wonderful annual meeting, general assembly, it was really a great event, and we had a former General, Secretary of State, former Chief Staff, former National Security Advisor, Heerel Powell. Secretary of State Powell was our speaker, Colin Powell, and he did a magnificent job of outlining all the lessons he learned in his career and a lot of the leadership principles that were very important, which he wrote a book about. He wasn't there pushing his book, but he just exudes leadership confidence. He's one of our great national heroes, greatest leaders of all time. It was wonderful to have him speak to us. And then also congratulate the Chilla Valley Association of Governments. They had a annual meeting last night, and it was really good as well. We had a very outstanding speaker. We had the executive, we had the editor of the Desert Sun, Kim Spoke. He's been on the job for 14 months. He did a wonderful job outlining what their newspapers focus on and area and their confidence in the desert area is really starting to come back and doing quite well. So, it's really good to see that you came out of the meeting with a lot of confidence in the future, the Chilla Valley and Los Angeles County. I think that we're on our way back. It's been tough, but we are definitely starting to turn the corner, and I feel very confident about it here. Thank you.
Supervisor Stone, any comments this morning?
No, Mr. Chair. I agree with Supervisor Ashley, both the Seabag General Assembly, which I attended last night, was a great coming together, if you will, of Eastern, Eastern County officials. And certainly, Colin Powell was quite an inspiration. We had a lot of high school kids that were there to ask questions of the General, and you could tell how excited some of our youth were to be there and to hear from such a statesperson as General Colin Powell. So, I appreciate all the efforts on behalf of both organizations.
And Mr. Orr, any comments this morning?
Thank you, Supervisor. I'd like to report to the board that on the 13th of June, the department heads with the executive office had their first, I'll call it, economic budget sum of all the department heads. And this type of meeting hasn't taken place, I know, with probably about the past 20 years. It was very productive. We had the elected department heads, and we appreciate their attendance and the rest of the department heads, and they worked diligently for two to three hours, working on cost-saving ideas. We're going to follow that up with one or two other meetings, and we know that taking the collective ideas on how we're going to reshape government and how to save money, that we are going to maintain our structurally balanced budget for this year. So, I'm very proud of the department heads for coming forward with ideas for this county. I'll also be in Sacramento on Thursday, meeting with our delegation for the Riverside area. It's really important that we be diligent at this time and diligent in watching the state budget. We know the state budget has been passed. We know there was an attempted raid on some more RDA money. That raid was held off, and so we think it's important to maintain that watch and meet with the delegation and express Riverside's concerns, and also thank the delegation for the work they're doing in helping us. We're also very aware that there's some very serious grand jury reports on the calendar today. We take those serious. Grand jury reports are something of a catch-22, though, and I have a lot of experience with the grand jury in my past work. We don't get the raw data and the raw evidence behind those reports. So, oftentimes, we don't know what the basis for those allegations are, but HR, the Executive Office, takes those allegations serious as well as those departments. And we'll come back with a full report to the board on what we see going on in your county, and we'll do that as expeditiously as possible. The catch-22 is at least two of those reports deal with HR matters. So, once again, we're bound by certain labor law and privacy issues on what we can report back, but we will give a complete report to the board because those allegations are very serious. We wish we could have the raw data and what's behind those reports, because we take these things very serious, and I know the board does. We also know on the agenda today that there's the Pension Review Advisor Report, and Mr. Corsair is prepared, if the board would like to pull that back.
Good. And although the county has one up to 90 days to respond to the grand jury, I take it your office will try to prioritize and expedite particularly important reports.
Yes, we will. We received a letter from the Chair asking for that, and I know the other board members like that as well and appreciate that. So, we are coming up with a plan with the human resources to address those issues and get that report back as soon as possible.
Very good. Okay, and we'll take item 3, 3.6 off the policy calendar, but first, let's go to any changes to our agenda this morning. Ms. Harper, I have, Ms. Pardon?
Good morning. Okay, additions, items 2.6, 3.38, and A.2, deletions none. Corrections, the public hearing for item 3.34 must be moved to July 17th, 2012 to meet the government code, and notations none.
And the move approval of the administrative action and consent calendar? Second.
And we do have a speaker on one of those items, item 2.6, so if you'll hold that back from the motion. And let's vote on all the items and accept item 2.6. And motion's carried, and all three present voting aye. Item 2.6, Ms. Lovely, do you have a comment?
Good morning, Council. I just wanted to come up here and make a statement. Basically, what I'm going to say is my opinion, and I strongly believe in what I'm about to say. I have never in my life seen such a shameful display of musical chairs by politicians here in the county. John Fields is the Chief of Staff for Supervisor Tavalloni, and he's the first alternate. Vern Lawrenceon, that was a real surprise to me. He is the mayor pro temp for the city of Yerupa Valley. I really see conflicts of interest, and I am not too happy to be seeing this at all. We also have Mr. Benoit overseeing the Oversight Board, because I know he's going to be the most seriously affected with what's going on there. We cannot keep having more...
Motion, I'll second your motion. Item 2.6.
I'd like to make a comment.
Second Supervisor Ashley?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion, but, you know, the reason we have a standby, in case something happens to one of us, you have to have somebody, like in an emergency, you know, like an emergency, something catastrophic happens, somebody's got to step up and take over. You have to appoint people that are knowledgeable that can step up and take over. And that's what Supervisor Tavallone's done, that's what Supervisor Buster is with, Supervisor Stone, Benoit, and myself. They have people that can step in and they have knowledge and they can take over. And that's the whole point. It's just not a matter of useful chairs or this or that. These are standbys of something. If catastrophic happened and we had to act, you have to have people that are knowledgeable that can take over. You can't appoint somebody that comes in like, what's going on now? So, I support the motion.
It's too, that's not democracy.
The, the county with only five members on the Board of Supervisors, a county this size with all the, all things that's going on, really cannot afford to miss a supervisor, even one supervisor, for an extended period of time. We found that out in the past. So, having, having these alternates or standby representatives is extremely important.
Now, this is for a case like, you know, like Supervisor Wilson died in office and I was appointed like, like the steward supervisor for that district, which is really difficult. And I did that for six months. The standby doesn't take over them. This is in a case of something like, you know, we have, you know, a, a, the earthquake or something, it just catastrophic happens that if it kills a supervisor and we have to act, you can't wait around for the governor to appoint somebody. You've got to have somebody to step in and fulfill that job until the governor can make the appointment and, and, or you have an election. You have to do that. You just can't just get, you know, somebody that's, that really has, has little knowledge of what's going on in government to do that. You have to have people that are knowledgeable and that's what we all try to do here. It's nothing, it's very much a part of our democracy.
Motion to approve item 2.6, please vote. All right. And that's carried, three, all three voting aye. That takes us to our policy items after threes and following. We have item 3.6 has been pulled. We have a Speaker on item 3.9. 3.34 is going to be set for hearing. Item 3.36, there's a Speaker. And I see item 3.13 also Speaker. Any other items that Board members wish to?
Mr. Chairman, we believe that the Speaker is actually for item 3.2, not 3.9.
Mr. Grant, you put 3.9. Do you want to speak on 3.2?
3.2.
All right.
Okay, you got it.
Oh, okay. I see. I see. It's, all right. Okay. Any other items Board members want to talk about? Any items Supervisor Ashley?
No.
Okay. And I'll move approval of the other items that have now been pulled on the policy calendar.
We have a waiver of the reading.
Yes.
On item 3.34, introduction ordinance number 824.13, an ordinance of the county of Riverside and any ordinance number 824, ending the temporary fee reduction for the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, also known as TUNF program, and reinstating the full TUNF. We also need to note that the hearing date will be July 17th, not July 3rd, so that we can read the government code.
Please vote on the motion to approve most of the policy items. And that's approved. That takes us back to item 3.2. Mr. Grant, come on.
This is a grand jury report on the county's Audit Controller and Terminal Audit Division. Yeah, actually, Mr. Chair, I would like to speak to this after your conversation and your decisions and your opinions appear, so that I have some understanding as to where your direction is and, and can answer them appropriately. I cannot do this to come up here and discuss this without you discussing it first. That's certainly being fair for we, the citizens of the United States of America. Don't you look up, nobody? Do you always do that, sir? The point is, is you're honest with the people, aren't you? And the way I see this, this subject matter, it is very involved and I need to know where your directions are in the relationship to how you're going to resolve these problems. Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir.
The Board receives a report.
I'm aware of that.
We respond to that report after we've had time to review it and respond appropriately. And then that report will be filed with the Board. At that point, the Board would have a basis to comment, if they want to comment. And that would be, that would be the time for you to address it, Gary. Then when we came, we come back with the report, then you can say if you disagree with it, you can. Right now?
Now, I think you should know what the public feels about the report as is first. And, and you should discuss it to the public of what you're going to discuss in the relationship to decisions that are made. You generally come to the decision. And don't forget that I'm the only representative here of this whole pile in, in the relationship to this subject matter. But I am in position of voting because I'm retired. I'm not working at this time of day like everybody else, but I do represent a lot of people. And I want to hear the correct direction of this discussion and how you've got the situation set up.
So, Mr. Grant, you get another crack at this?
No, I really don't want to. I, I would like to speak, as I stated initially, is that you should announce what you're going to do first and then I can go start from there.
Supervisor Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If Mr. Grant was listening, he'd understand that this is a report from the grand jury to the Board of Supervisors. You can't comment on something that we don't know where the details came from, the origin of the data. It is going to come back to us on July 31st, so I don't think anybody is going to be commenting, at least not this Supervisor, on the grand jury reports. What we have found in the past is that there's, the civil grand jury makes reports and more often than not, after we have all the facts and recreate all the facts, we often refute their findings. And it's my understanding that of the 50 states that once had civil grand juries, I believe there are only two states that have civil grand juries. I believe it's Nevada and California. So, 48 other states have found no utility in the value of civil grand juries. And yes, we do take their reports and their criticisms seriously. It's unfortunate that in advance of the grand jury report, we don't get any backup of the basis of their criticisms, which is really harmful to the county because it can shock and awe people that the county is doing inappropriate things. Once in a while, they come up with something that is very important that needs correcting and certainly transparency is very important. But I would prefer that when we get these reports, and by the way, when we get these reports, we can't even comment on for a certain period of time in accordance with the grand jury's requirements. But it'd be nice if we had all the data so that we could see what the grand jury was examining, so that we could refute or support their, their welcoming suggestions on how we can approve county government. So, on July 31st, our staff will do a comprehensive analysis of what is being alleged and we will have an appropriate response. And certainly, there's always areas in government where we can approve, we welcome those, those criticisms, but we will refute, and I will say, we will refute vehemently if there are any allegations against this county that are, are not true. Mr. Chair?
All right. Thank you. And now we'll go to item 3.6, our Pension Advisory Review Committee's annual.
Mr. Chair?
Pension report.
We need to take a vote.
Can I move it for a little? Second.
All right. Let's vote on that. Item 3.2, I'm sorry. So, we'll have our report by the end of July. All right, that passes. Okay, now item 3.6, our annual pension report. Mr. Corser, we have three major indicators for the county, our property tax, our sales tax, and our, hesitant to call it a pension tax, but that's what-